Greens and you've been shopping. There's no way you can turn left to go to town. You have to go right because of the traffic that is happening there. It's congested for everybody there.
Well, unfortunately, some of that is outside of our control. There are several inlets and exits from the business parking lots in that area, which would be private property. The State Department of Highways is also a contender with that area as well as West Main Street is considered a state highway, as is Route 20. So there are certain regulations that they require. And I have sat to make a left onto West Main Street from that one-way alley for quite a long time, too. I don't personally, as someone who travels that a good bit myself, I don't live in that neighborhood, but I travel that a good bit because my parents live not far from that area of town. So I cut through alleys as well. And I've never had a problem coming out of CVS, of the Apothecary Way, to turn left onto Main Street. I've actually had a little bit easier of a time turning left from Apothecary Way versus the previous one-way alley because you're a little closer to town, so the traffic coming around the curve is a little further away from you. And if you're not in a peak traffic time, traffic does go pretty fast through there. When it comes around that curve, it's coming. So I've found it to be somewhat easier. Now, everybody's going to have their own experience, of course, but this, and as I mentioned in the email as well, the Consolidated Public Works Board would be the appropriate place to have a conversation about the alley. And we have spent last several meetings, Jack, Councilman Rigger, as well as Council Lady Buckloo, are both members of the Consolidated Public Works Board. And Mr. Sanders sits in on them to record the minutes. We've now had three different meetings just this spring alone about what can we do to correct some of the traffic concerns in that area. And each week, we continue to have the conversation. So what I would encourage is for you to attend the Consolidated Public Works Board meeting, and we can continue to have a conversation about the appropriate traffic flow on that street, as well as the alley that's even further to the east, on the other side of CVS that would border Taco Bell and the sign guy. Those are both, those have both been in our conversation realm because they're so close to each other. But that's the board that would have a vote. That's the board where it would be on an agenda to be able to do anything. This council would just refer it to that board, and then that board would make the decision and then refer it back for final approval to the city council. Okay? And I think I mentioned that meeting is, I pulled the email here, that email, or that email, that meeting is Thursday, May 25th, at 7:30 a.m. here at City Hall. And that's a monthly meeting.
In the morning.
Yeah, 7:30 a.m. Yep.
Okay. All right.
My question along the same area is not concerning coming out, but rather traffic coming into from Route 33 onto Main Street around the curve. And then we've been turning right on those two alleys mainly to get back in towards East Lincoln Street and the areas back in there. And especially during hours when there are a lot of activity on Main Street, parades and strawberry festivals and different things where people want to get around, get to their homes up there. And I personally had relatives coming into Buchanan from Morgantown that can't get there until after, this is my problem individually, though. I wanted to explain that. But getting into that area to come around and get through the other areas of town, there is no way of doing that now with the traffic backed up on West Main Street going out to 33. There's no entrance and no egress into that area of town. Now, you can get around town by going around Rusty Fork. You can go that way around town and miss the whole thing. But this is people coming into town that want to watch the activities going on. They've come there and they've parked in their friends' yards and everything. Several things going on in town throughout the year. You've got the world's biggest yard sales coming in where you know that's a holy mess through there anyway. And most of the people going up into the higher rent districts of Lincoln Street and Bogus Street in that area come through by those two alleys that were now deeded over to the St. Joseph's Hospital. And just a lot of traffic, and I am concerned with the upcoming strawberry festival and with the Wamsby. And I've talked to Mr. Sanders and to Mr. Wykoff about this, too. I don't think they realize how much of a jam that's going to be with people coming into town from exterior parts of town that normally come. And there's no way with the traffic control we're going to have with Wamsby and the strawberry festival that that is not going to be a huge profit of such a traffic jam from Route 33, Quarter H, on into Buchanan and also around it. That's just my concern.
Well, there, so you say that there's no way in. There are actually three. There are three ways to Franklin Street from Main Street. There is Apothecary Way, there is the alley, which I believe is Katz Street, which is immediately next to CVS. And then there is a third way. If you turn into the furthest right portion coming from the west of Citizens Bank's parking lot, it's still an alley that takes you to Franklin Street. So there are three ways, both in and out of Franklin Street.
Once you get there? You're going to have to wait 20 minutes or more to get to either.
It's not 20 minutes. It was about five.
During a peak time during the festival, there's going to be probably.
Cars will be back there. I've seen them backed up here for the people coming to the festival. They can't get through Main Street. They've been stopped there by traffic, by barricades, backed up by there, and also along Route 20 going the other way. And it's just a really difficult situation.
Here's the thing, with a festival that's as large as the strawberry festival, which brings over 50,000 people to Buchanan, in a city where 6,000 people live, no matter where you go, you're going to have traffic jams, no matter where. We have traffic jams on every major street, every smaller street, every alley. And it's only one week. And it's a one-week thing that I don't see how a couple of blocks are going to make much of a difference during that particular time. You know, we've, and again, I want to preface this. This was done to accommodate St. Joseph's Hospital for future development, which they are ready to do. So they own that property, and that includes the alleys.
So it's probably not something that we can turn back anyhow.
Right.
The property is transferred, so it's not something that we can take back, you know? So I guess we're just going to have to figure workarounds, you know?
CJ, you can see where the problem.
I see it. I get them in and out of Walgreens and have to wait. I just pull out until they let me in and block traffic.
Is there any way the light that cannot turn right when red?
Yeah, about that. So we have requested from the DOH to have that removed. And they are, but see, again, and I want to make sure everybody understands this, we have nothing to do with the stoplights, no matter where they are, okay? So the state DOH controls every stoplight in Upstate County. We did not put the stoplights on Route 33. We do not control the stoplights at Main Street. So we had the request to the DOH for that to happen. And with anything with the DOH, it requires a study. And so they are looking into it to see if it's something that they can accommodate for us. Because I agree with you, as, you know, I've sat there and, you know, just waiting on that light to change when no one's coming. And so what's happening, if we could get that removed, I do think that would help things tremendously because it would just allow people to turn right. So the city did not put that up. That is a State Department of Highways sign, which, again, we have asked for them to take that down. So, and we can just kind of do this and hope for the best that they do. But we're in, we've been in constant contact with the DOH over different issues that we've had here in town. And I've even made a trip to Charleston over a couple of serious issues that the DOH was, it was, we were, it could have not been very good for Buchanan. So, but they're looking at it, and I'm really hopeful that they can see fit to take that down. So.
One other question. The department, the context of minutes and what's upcoming, are they published ahead of time so that we can tell what?
We have the same requirements. We have, for open government legislation, we have a requirement to post every single public meeting agenda that we have 72 hours in advance of the meeting, which we publish every agenda. It's outside at City Hall Lobby. It goes to all of our media partners. It goes, Randy puts it out over our website and through social media. So we publish and make sure that it's known.
But it wouldn't do any good to put it in newspapers because they don't come out on a daily basis, right?
Well, we share it with the news media so they know what's coming up at the meeting that's going to be discussed. And then the news coverage will cover a story following the discussion at the meeting. So.
I'm more interested in knowing what's going to happen beforehand than what happens afterhand.
Well, wouldn't we all? I'd love to be able to see the future.
Thank you for allowing us to talk to you. We appreciate it.
Sure.
My last question is, did St. Joseph's say when they're actually going to start?
No, but I did have a meeting this week with a developer that they are working with. So.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for coming.
You guys do a good job.
Thank you.
Where'd I put my hat?
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Linger, would you like us just to go ahead and place you on that agenda as a guest?
Sure.
Okay, all right. We can communicate that through the office in the morning.
That way, if I don't get up in time, since I'm retired.
25th at 7:30 in the morning.
Lauren, I'll send you a couple of messages. Do you have control now? If not, I have the PowerPoint that I can walk through it.
I do not. I just have, I have control that enables me to move stuff on your desktop, but I don't have the share button, so.
Let's just go ahead. I'll do the PowerPoint from here, but if you could just tell me when to go to the next slide, okay?
Okay, I think this, what you have open is the PDF, which is fine. You can just scroll through. But I also sent the PowerPoint version of PDFs for everybody to have after the presentation for information.
There we go. All right. Good job, everybody. Thank you.
All righty. Well, my name is Lauren Frederick, and I am the Continuum of Care Director for the West Virginia Coalition of Homelessness, which also serves as the lead agency for the West Virginia Balance State, which we'll talk about in just a minute. I'm going to do just a quick overview of everything that we do, but it's a lot of information-heavy stuff, so I will send these slides, or I have sent these slides to Teresa so she can send them out. We'll dive into data, which I know every city council is interested in in regards to your community and is a little bit more Upstate County-based, since that's how our initiatives operate countywide. But a lot of the services we know are in Buchanan. And then we'll talk a little bit about Built for Zero initiative in this community. Kathy, do you, I'm sure they know you already, but if you want to introduce yourself as She's there.
Kathy McMurray, Executive Director for Mountain Cap of West Virginia and Chair of the Upstate County Homeless and Housing Coalition.
All right. So we'll go ahead and get to the next slide.
All right. Hang on, give me a second.
I think you have the PDF open, so you might just need to scroll.
Yeah, right. What if we used?
There is a.
There we go.
Can you see that?
Yes. So who is the coalition? We are what is called the Collaborative Applicant and Lead Agency for the Balance State Continuum of Care, so we oversee the funding process for HUD homeless assistance dollars in the 44 counties that we serve, Upstate County being one of them. We are the Homeless Management Information System Lead Agency. I can't see the slides now, but I can.
Can you see it now?
Yes. So basically, that is a database that tracks individuals that are experiencing homelessness. And the cool thing about West Virginia is that we have one statewide database. We can see how people are moving around and their individual needs. We are also the Coordinated Entry Lead, which is our information and referral system. We are the SSI, SSDI Outreach Access Recovery State Lead, so we oversee the case management trainings for individuals that are working with clients to get them connected with benefits. We provide administrative oversight for the homeless contract shelters across the state. And we are also the Youth Homelessness Administration Program Lead. Next slide. So in addition to our administrative functions, we are also a direct service provider. So in 2013, I was actually one of the first outreach workers that we, when we moved into direct service, and I cover the Upstate County area. And so we do a little bit of, we do street outreach, mobile recovery services, youth and family programs, we operate the coordinated entry system, we do a little bit of prevention and diversion from homelessness and eviction prevention, we operate permanent supportive housing and tenant-based rental assistance through rapid rehousing. So the role of a continuum of care lead agency is to obviously promote a community-wide commitment to ending homelessness, provide funding to quickly rehouse individuals that are experiencing homelessness, and optimize self-sufficiency among those that we serve. So basically, that's the federal ranks, but we, as a continuum of care, oversee the annual funding competition and program compliance, which is my primary role. We conduct data analysis and target community resources in different areas across our service area, and then foster relationships with local, state, and federal partners across multiple sectors, healthcare, justice, education systems. All right, next slide. So again, I'm not going to dive deep into homeless definitions. If you're interested in the different types of federal definitions and how it applies to different funding and programs in your community, you can always reach out to me and my contact information is on the slides as well. But basically, for HUD homeless assistance programs, individuals that are eligible for these programs either have to be literally homeless, so they're sleeping outside, in a place not member human habitation, living in a shelter, transitional housing, or a hotel paid for by a charitable organization, or they've exited an institution where they resided less than 90 days, such as jail or hospital. Those that are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence are also eligible for these programs. And we also have a limited amount of funding for youth-specific and eviction prevention programs, which we know have, there's a plethora of it with the emergency rental assistance programs, but there still is a little bit of it that we target across the state for those that are imminent risk of homelessness. And for the purposes of Built for Zero, which I'm going to get into in just a moment, we, I wanted to provide an overview of the definition of chronic homelessness. That's those that have a disability under the ADA or end or substance use disorder and that have been homeless for one year or longer or four times in the last three years that equals that 12-month period. Okay, next slide. So we're thinking of those that have been outside and are hardest to serve in that chronic definition. So there are four continuums of care in the state of West Virginia. So we serve as that statewide advocacy body for homeless services, but how funding is funneled through our state is through the four continuums of care and then also the Development Office at the state. So there is the Huntington, Charleston, and Wheeling coalitions. The reason those were established a long time ago, back in the 80s and 90s, is when HUD was like, oh, you know, those urban areas, and those were considered our urban areas back then, that need a homeless assistance funding, and then agency applies to be the lead and funnels that funding through the state. Then they realized, oh my goodness, there's all these rural areas across our country that are also in need of resources. So we developed the Balance of State Continuum of Care for the rest of those 44 counties that weren't originally covered. So as you can see, Upstate County is one of those counties. And then specifically for your community, housing and resources are the Housing Choice Vouchers. So that would be through the Buchanan Housing Authority or the Randolph County Housing Authority outside of Buchanan. The public housing through the Buchanan Housing Authority, the Foster Youth Independence Initiative vouchers, which is a new program for youth that are aging out of foster care, coupled with case management, and that's done through the Randolph County Housing Authority and Mountain Cap. Mountain Cap is also one of the primary rapid rehousing programs in your area, those tenant-based rental assistance coupled with case management. And then the Coalition and Mountain Cap in your area also do street outreach and housing navigation. So our direct service sector, it's kind of spreads throughout, and we have staff all over the state that support those local agencies, such as Mountain Cap, in providing services. All right, so let's dive into the data. So I don't know if any of you are familiar with the point-in-time count. I do like to preface this by saying the point-in-time count is just one night, just a snapshot of what's going on across the nation. It's required by Congress that we do it the last 10 days of January so they can identify what is the minimum amount of funding a state or continuum of care would need to end homelessness in their jurisdictions. We know that, you know, oftentimes folks that are able to find a place to stay when it gets really cold because of that good old southern hospitality that we still have here in West Virginia a little bit, but this is more or less just a snapshot, and then we're going to dive into the month-to-month data that we're analyzing year-round. Wait, go back real quick? Can you go back really quick? So in COC-wide, so the 44 counties we serve, back in January, there were 767 people that were experiencing homelessness. 154 were what we would call chronic individuals, and 44 of those were veterans. And the next slide will tell us a little bit more about Upstate County specifically. So 27 people on the night of the point-in-time count were identified as experiencing homelessness. Obviously, most of those would have been unsheltered or in a hotel because you guys do not have a designated emergency shelter in your area. This does encompass those that are from Upstate County that might be staying in a domestic violence shelter in another county. Five of those were chronic, and one of those were veterans. Next slide. So what about Upstate County specifically? And we can break this down to Buchanan a little bit more. We have, I'll send some links out that has interactive data where you can actually kind of see where people were counted. Then we utilize that to send outreach and resources to them after the count. But on a monthly basis, as of March 2023, we had 20 individuals experiencing homelessness in Upstate County area. And then three of those were what we call the chronic homelessness. Those of them have been outside for a year or longer and have that disability. All right, next slide. So this is my favorite slide. As I know, as local government, you guys have presented with this question a lot, like, where are these people coming from? They're not from here. Well, national data tells us that 84% of those who become homeless, become homeless in the community that they grew up or resided for one year or longer. In Upstate County, we've been collecting this information by zip code, so again, we can break it down even a little bit further for you all if you would like. But for Upstate County, 73% of people experiencing homelessness are from Upstate County or resided in Upstate County for a year or longer. So majority of people experiencing a housing crisis or homelessness in your community are from here and their neighbors. It changes the mindset when you're really working with the community on how do we address this scenario. This is more statewide data from the National Low Income Housing Coalition. They do not break it out by county, but just overall for West Virginia, is working in a minimum wage job, you need to work 57 hours a week to afford a one-bedroom apartment at fair market rent. 33% of renters are considered extremely low-income, meaning their incomes are at or below the poverty line. And of those extremely low-income renters, 66% live with a severe cost burden, meaning that they spend more than half of their income on housing. So what do we need to solve this problem, you ask? Affordable housing development. So let's dive into Built for Zero and why we're targeting specific communities. Upstate County is actually one of the, we're targeting four communities, Upstate, Barbara, Randolph, and Lewis. And we're also working in Clarksville, Morgantown, and Martinsburg at this time as we expand across our continuum for what is called the Built for Zero initiative. This initiative was developed by Community Solutions, which is a national organization that works with communities across the country to end homelessness. They, if anybody was around, about 10 years ago, they had the 100,000 Homes campaign where we housed over 100,000 individuals during that timeframe in the nation. And this is specifically an initiative that targets subpopulations of those that are experiencing homelessness. We have chosen to target what is called our chronic population first. This does not mean that we are still not working to house our families, our youth, our veterans, but this is basically a way to say, okay, if we can solve this issue or at least be able to set up enough resources and housing to begin to have enough to meet the need for the most highly vulnerable, hardest-to-serve individuals in our system, then we can solve it for everybody. So part of this initiative is to identify within your community what would be functional zero. So again, how many people are inflowing into your system and analyzing the data in relation to the need and what resources are needed, specifically housing, transitional housing, what type of resources are needed. By hitting functional zero, it would be that we would have less than three individuals experiencing chronic homelessness across our entire 44 counties. So we have three here, but we have several, you know, in Morgantown, Clarksville, we're getting ready to expand to Parkersburg. So we would, the actual goal would be to have less than three individuals who are chronic in our entire 44 counties. All right, so next slide. So again, a little bit deeper into functional zero, I'll send you all, if you're interested in the Community Solutions piece and the role of, and we'll talk a little bit about that at the end, of local government and this initiative. But it's basically, again, trying to ensure that we have less than three individuals experiencing chronic homelessness at any given time across our 44 counties. And then we utilize data, our monthly data that I just shared with you to see, meet with local nonprofits and those that are serving those individuals and working to develop some case conferencing around why they're still outside and what we need to do to get them in housing and keep them there. Next slide. So this is a good quote I always like to share. So imagine if the homeless services system operated like a well-functioning hospital. That hospital would not necessarily prevent people from ever becoming sick, but it will ensure that people are triaged appropriately and promptly receive the services they need to address that illness, preventing any future harm. So we're not going to end poverty. We're not going to ever have enough housing across the nation that's affordable for, you know, low and medium-income individuals. But how do we begin to set up our systems locally to improve our outcomes for the individuals that live there? Next slide. Again, I'm not going to go through all this for the sake of time for everyone, but with functional zero, we do have to have a shared aim, you know, a shared goal. So again, my goal for why I do this work and I have for nearly 10 years, starting, again, starting as an outreach worker down in your area, is because I believe that in a developed country that we, there's no reason that anybody should be sleeping outside on a park bench. But I am not here to change opinions or hearts. I am here to find a common goal. And I think that we can all agree that if nobody wants to see homelessness in their community, whether that be for your businesses or whether that be because, you know, you just care about humanity, the common goal is that we do not want individuals on our streets. We want them to be in housing. So again, finding a common goal, having those longstanding nonprofits like Mountain Cap and then Randolph County Housing Authority, Buchanan Housing Authority, really working on case conferencing and identifying what are the needs of these individuals, because we've identified them. We have a by-name list, and we know who they are. And again, working through those specific scenarios to get them in housing. Next slide. And again, as I mentioned, I kind of jumped ahead, a comprehensive, real-time by-name list to have the active data to show that need, and then a strategic data-driven housing investment. So how do we target resources to expand those housing in the community and also community supports to keep people in housing once they're there? So understanding that homelessness is not contained to a single sector, it is a large multi-system, you know, actually, lack thereof, as social supports that have fallen through and have been designed to actually serve people in need. So we're talking about mental health systems, we're talking about, you know, healthcare, our foster care system, working with all those different systems to begin to address the needs of individuals that we're serving. Coordinating those resources, starting community by community, which is what we're doing. And then our goal is to reach functional zero of chronic homelessness by July 2025. So you ask if you would like to get involved? Here's how. You can assist us with engaging healthcare providers, behavioral health and justice system partners in your community, engaging your county commission, as we know that they do pay for individuals that are floating in and out of our justice system. And it's costly for a community to have people sleeping outside. It's costly for your justice system, your healthcare system, and it actually costs your community four times more to leave somebody outside and not provide them services and to house them and pay for their housing for a year. to house them and pay for their housing for a year with the cost of uncovered, again, medical expenses, ER visits, in and out of jail. So it's actually costing us more to not do anything. Again, support, I'll come back up a little bit, engage local property owners, developers, and landlords to develop affordable housing. Support the coordination of federal, state, and local resources for housing development. And then help change the narrative in your community surrounding the cause of homelessness because it's a breakdown of our social systems and which ultimately leads to homelessness. So every system has failed the individuals that you see out on your streets, and that's the ultimate cause. It could be, people always say, what causes homelessness? Yeah, some people use substances, some people have mental illness, some folks are experiencing domestic violence or they had a traumatic, you know, medical expenses that led them to be homeless. But ultimately, all those other systems that are in place to keep people from being homeless have failed them. So how do we engage them to kind of work to change that narrative? Kathy, I flew through that because I wanted, for the sake of time, but do you have anything to add?
Yes. Do you have any idea of the data available on how much is spent on homelessness in the state?
In the entire state?
Yeah.
So our continuum receives a little over 4.3 million. That's staffing, that's kind of base rental expense, that's operations, but majority of the funding goes directly to individuals. And that's not just to our agency. So we are just the oversight and I oversee compliance with HUD federal regulations, but it's dispersed and passed through to local partners such as, Mountain Cap receives our youth homelessness demonstration funding, they also receive emergency solutions grant funding. But in order to, I would have to, I don't want to give you the wrong numbers. So I can get that compiled to show you and see how much is actually going directly to your community. But again, that's just for housing support. It's not for development specifically. That would be through the Housing Development Fund.
And that 4.3 million is based on 767 in your area?
For the 44 counties, yeah. So it's dispersed among, between the CFC funding and the youth funding, there's 28 projects. That includes running our database, our intake line, and then actual housing and outreach projects.
That 700 and some numbers, just the number that were counted on that one night across the state that they found outside.
There may be more.
But there's lots of people in shelters and lots of people being helped in affordable housing, maybe short-term assistance, things like that. So those dollars are going in a lot of different directions.
Yeah.
For prevention and for temporary housing until we can find.
It does fluctuate because as you said, that was the census collected on one evening.
Right.
I know that we, at the meeting this week at the Parish House, Chief Gregory alluded to one individual who is now at Tiger Valley Regional Jail. And so as she pointed out, what that costs the community, one night, one stay per person at Tiger Valley Regional Jail is over $170 just for one individual. And so, so it's the, it's from one hand to the other, basically. If we don't work to find a solution, we're either paying for it on the incarceration end, which I think we all are of the belief that we cannot arrest ourselves out of this, out of this, that's not the solution. And/or we're, as a community, our services are stretched when they're on the streets.
I mean, years ago, and this has been years ago, probably close to 20 years ago now, there was a study that was called Million Dollar Murray. And they took one individual and followed him, you know, over the course of a year or whatever it was. And the amount of services that person used, going in and out of the ER, going in and out of the jail system, et cetera, they figured it cost about a million dollars. So you could have housed them for a lot less money and provided a little bit of services to help them stay in housing. So it is really a cost-effective way is to find a way to get people housed and then offer them the services that can help them stay there.
This question could be for Lauren or for you, Kathy, because I've worked with Mountain Cap in the past as a landlord. And I've had some tenants flourish after they've had a few months of assistance and I've had others who haven't. And the question is, and I've never asked this question, do the services like Mountain Cap work with those individuals immediately on budgetary issues? In other words, sitting down with that person and saying, now, your first three months are taken care of, but you've got to start planning now for month four, five, six, and seven beyond.
That's a part of it. But there's also, as Lauren alluded to, a lot of other deeper issues too. It's, you know, getting attached to, maybe they don't even have the social safety net that they should be attached to. So it's working to make sure they have those resources. It's working to make sure they have, if we can find it, mental health care, those sorts of things to address.
Right.
But, you know, until you're housed, it's just like Maslow's, you know, law. You have to have that basic housing before you can begin to work on those other issues. So the case manager works within all those areas.
Kathy, I understand. I do work with another agency.
Helping them try to find it.
Right. I work with another agency who actually manages their clients' finances for them and they pay their rent monthly.
Well, there's, some people have a P E, but that's not something.
That's an option if they have like a P E service. And if we do, you know, when I was a case manager and outreach worker, I would, you know, recommend that to Social Security and a lot of times that they, you know, would be able to do that. Again, I think going back to, you mentioned Parish House, if, you know, we would like, if we need more partners at the table, your hospital system hasn't been to a meeting yet. You know, we've sent out invites pretty broadly to healthcare, justice system. You know, we would love to have probation at some of these meetings. A lot of them are virtual because we are covering a four-county area. But it would be helpful to have those other partners there so we can address some of these issues because it is, I don't want to say it's as easy now to find housing as it was back when I was doing it because of the rental market and the cost of increased. But the hardest part beyond finding the housing for individuals is providing those wraparound supports to keep them there. Because it would be great if we housed all 27 people that we found on the 911 point time count, but if 20 of the 27 ended up homeless again, then it's not, you know, doesn't make any sense to be doing that. So again, increasing supportive services and resources to keep them there. But it's a little bit, I don't want to say it's outside of the control of the HUD programs, but it is, we're very limited if we do not have good partners with our behavioral health, healthcare, justice, and other nonprofits meeting those basic needs. That's key and that's something that the city council can assist with and encourage some of those other partners to come to the table in order to make this successful.
I will mention to council and to everyone, in response to some of the concerns that were brought forth here at a meeting now about a month and a half ago, I'm grateful to Kathy, the executive director of Mountain Cap, for reaching out. And so ever since, myself, Mr. Sanders, Chief Matt Gregory, Lieutenant Doug Loudon, and Fire Chief JV Kimball, we've been regularly attending the Upstate County Homelessness Coalition meetings, held at the second Wednesday of every month at the Parish House with the exception of this month due to Strawberry Festival this month. So it was held yesterday, this past Wednesday. And those meetings have been very informative. There's representation from the community, there's representation from West Virginia Westland, there's representation from, I'm sorry.
Christie Tenny.
Christie Tenny, that's right, from the county commission, as well as the Parish House and Mountain Cap, so as well as churches. We've had representatives from the Way of Holiness Church and, you know, there's, and that's another, that's another avenue that churches, a lot of churches serve the community here. I'm a lifelong member of Chapel Hill United Methodist Church and Chapel Hill has, we have a specific fund in our budget that is dedicated to community outreach. And that is for, that is to help with folks who are struggling. I know First United Methodist Church, they dedicate their entire line item to the Parish House to help with those who are struggling. So I think we definitely, yesterday I made a list after the meeting of every possible organization that we have in the community that can, that can help combat this. And we have more than we realize. It just, I think we need some coordination and I think we need just some, we need some leadership to kind of help this move forward. And I hope that more of those will follow and come along board with this group that Kathy is leading because I think that that's the direction, that the leadership is there in that aspect. We just need, I think we just, we need everybody at the table. I also attended a meeting in Elkins this week, kind of talking about some of the same things. And so this is not, I know we all know this, but this is not a Buchanan Upstate County issue. This is a nationwide and worldwide issue. It doesn't matter if we're a small city or large city. Every city of any size is dealing with societal, societal issues. And it's not all, it is not all as a result of drug abuse. This is multifaceted. It's a complex issue. If it were a simple issue, the country would have had this solved, the world would have had this solved. It has significant complexity. Mental health plays such a role in this as well and that, there's, that's such an unknown because you never know what's going on in here and in here. You know, people, I heard this quote the other day and it's so true. People do not fake being unwell. They fake being okay. And so that's, it's so difficult to see past what we show the world from our facade to what's really going on. So I appreciate Lauren bringing this presentation to us. I appreciate my Buchanan reporting on this from last time in the Record Delta. And I appreciate certainly Kathy and your leadership with the coalition. And I certainly have hope for us to really, to really be a leader in solving, solving some of these issues here in our community and we could be a model for others to follow as well, so.
And we certainly appreciate everyone at, you know, at community level and at government level really stepping forward to help us with this. Because like you said, there's no simple solution if we'd have figured it out already. But we can begin to put in some structure and some potential solutions that might at least mitigate the issue.
Yeah.
So thank you, Lauren.
I can add one, just one more thing. I, we, when we were picking these communities, I advocated for the Elkins Buchanan area and then I also know Barbara and Lewis, even though everybody is a little unique, had similar issues because that's the area I've worked in. So I'm here to support you all, you know, look at other funding options. We have a whole affordable housing primer to talk with, you know, city and local and county government in regards to how do we provide property managers tax credits and things like that to actually develop housing. So I'm here to support you. Again, Mountain Cap and Parish House and those folks there, you know, in our Bay-based community are leading, you know, the community initiative, but I am here to support you all and this is, this area's always had a special place in my heart. So anything I can do, any data I can get you in regards to if you're looking at different funding opportunities, I'm here to help.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
At this time, would anyone else wish to address city council before we consider the time for public comment closed? No? Okay. We will consider the time for recognized guests and public comment closed. So we will move on with the remainder of our agenda. And first up, we have our Public Works Director, Jerry Arnold.
Hi, Jerry.
Hey, Jerry.
Mr. Sanders. I'm working mostly with the crews on the Madison Street project, have been the past few weeks. Also, the street crews continue to work on the Gateway West and they're near completion on the sidewalk. We are probably going to postpone the Refuge Island until after the Wambsky event in July. So we'll wrap that sidewalk up and then go back and put that island in. We'll continue to work to install the streetlights along West Main though and finish that up. Continue working on the Madison Street project. We're planning to have the asphalt base course laid Monday in preparation for the festival. Also, our contractor's finishing sidewalks on South Florida and the Stalker Youth and Community Center fence will be installed. Actually talked to the contractor today, it'll be here Monday. We actually pushed that back because after looking at it and increasing the width of the sidewalk, we wanted to put in a small retaining wall. And if you drove down Florida Street here, Blake, you'll see that we've installed that small retaining wall. And that way we didn't have to have such a drastic drop-off to the sidewalk. Also, that allows for the installation of the posts for the fence directly into that wall so that'll eliminate weed eating and make it, just dress it up and make it look a lot nicer. So I will report, the bad news is, we are, it looks like on blacktop materials in general, and I think I've reported this before to council, it looks like we're at about a 30% increase in project costs. And unfortunately, that's following our electrical conduit, our wiring and everything. So Andy and I were just discussing that about future budget revisions for project cost increases. And again, we had, so actually it comes down to about a 20% overall because we had about 10 to 15 in our projects for overrun. So that's where we're at on projects.
That doesn't do us any good with thinking about the quote on the gymnasium, huh?
No.
We're 20, 30% overrun on small projects, I would think big projects are.
Yes, materials, and again, you know, it just, they just keep in. Engineering, FEMA Generator Hazard Mitigation Grant Number Two. Jay's reporting that the contractor continues to work on the punch list items so FEMA can schedule a final field review and the grant can be closed out. The grant number one, they continue to address punch list on that one as well. The steel platform for contract three is being fabricated. That would be the generator for the public safety complex. The generator's been delivered and is on site at our Mudlock facility. FEMA Community Visit, Jay's got a community visit to gather and prepare for FEMA on June the 8th for the CRS review and reaccreditation for the city. And that's all I have there unless there's questions.
I want to just kind of give a shout out to Councilman Ryland because he's the one who prompted us, I think, to give this sidewalk a closer look besides Stalker. And that was a very narrow sidewalk going down through there. And I think if you look now, that is a very, very good, great improvement for pedestrian flow, for the safety of pedestrians. And it's going to be a much cleaner, better look for the Stalker Youth and Community Center coming off of Florida Street as well with the retaining wall and the gate, or the fences coming in, so.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah. So thank you, CJ.
You're very welcome.
Anything else for Jerry? Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Jerry.
Take care, Jerry.
Up next is Ann Beryl, who assures us she's got a very long report for us. So we'll, Andy, we're capping you off at 45 minutes.
Oh, I'm not. It's longer than Jerry's, I think. So your balances, and we'll just start with those, April of '23, general fund money marketing checking, 904,000, the CD remains at 86,000, historic landmark savings, 3,000. Stalker Youth Center capital campaign, 440,000, with the $12,000 pledge, 452,000 for total. Coal tax, 63,000. Municipal stabilization, 917,000. Flood control, 78,000. Consolidated Public Works, 183,000. Sales tax, 1,645,000. American Rescue Plan Act, 1,938,000. In your bills that we're looking at from the last meeting that you're going to approve, Capital Electric, 28,000, 571, that's for light poles and fixtures for Gateway West South sidewalk project. Two Ruffey Trucking, 10,501, standing for the Shawnee Drive, Scott Street and Madison Lot. Central Supply, 11,777, concrete for Florida Street sidewalks. Silco Concepts, 2200 for paint curbs near the college. Trade Works for labor at the South Florida Street and Conex Container, 10,840. To Benjamin Airsmen for mowing city logs, $3,300. Gary Wayne Strope, 253 yards of topsoil. Gary Wayne Strope, uh, 253 uh yards of topsoil for the Madison Street Project, 15,180. The sun guy, 3,400, $3,400 for uh street sun faces. Uh, Lowe's Materials for CAC, 2,500, and then trade works for labor at the CAC, 15,396. In your revenues and expenditures, your revenues for the month of April were 1,059,997. Now, we transferred 500,000 of the sales tax into that. That's the budgeted contribution, so we just take it in pieces. Uh, we received $232,000 in being noted in the month of April. The expenses were 678,000, so we made uh 381,000 more in revenue than in expenses. Any questions on the general fund revenues and expenditures or regarding the rest of it? In um CAC report, Colonial Arts Center report, um, three activities has been held in the Colonial Arts Center this past month. Uh, the middle school play uh was held April the 21st and 22nd, was free to the public. 95 people attended each show. West Virginia Dance Company performed one night, April 28th. It was also free to the public. 80 people attended that. BCT, BCT is now showing the play, The Red Velvet Cake War, it's starting tonight. It goes from the 4th through the 7th. Uh, BCT selling tickets and uh share of that portion is going to go to the CAC. The city will get back a portion of those sales. In the MIB Gallery, the Upsher Art Show uh was held from April the 7th to the 23rd. The Buchanan Camera Club's, Club's going to hold a show there from May, the 5th through the 27th. The Rotary Club donated 2,000 dollars to go towards the production of the West Virginia Dance Company show that was held in April. And there will be a Rustic Mechanical Show held in July 14th. And on June 16th, the R2621 is going to present the lyers contest. And I think Bill Leth will be present for one night of that. Um, and then as far as construction, the AD chair lifts have been installed. The concession area is complete. The facade is very, very close to being complete. And I think the contractor and jury are pushing to have that covering taken down probably next week.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Uh, seating for the balcony will be installed June the 1st. And then the CAC manager uh is going to become posting more frequently information on the CAC uh through the website. And I note that the R2621 obtained a grant to uh build that website for them. Under the CAC building.
Ask what Stockard Youth and Community Center building.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Stockard. I'm so used to the acronym, thank you for touching me on that. So the Stockard Youth Center uh building, the new one that we're looking to construct, an update on those, those, that progress. You know, we're trying to get a USDA loan, so there's lots of hoops to jump through there. I contacted the CPA that's going to work on the financial feasibility study. I've sent them several pieces of financial information to work on. Petesta has delivered the, the geotechnical report to the Mills Group this week. Uh, the Mills Group is finishing up their drawings for the bidding process. Uh, timelines are getting extended though. Realistically, the project will not go up to bid until around August 1st. Our architect strongly suggests we get the funding sources in place uh he's, before we go out to bid. He states that the contractors are not likely to hold any bids more than 60 days. And I guess in some instances, 30 days because there's so much demand on them now. Uh, and prices are fluctuating. Uh, and then again, on the uh items needed for delivery to USDA for the financial app, we need that for the financial application process to finish. For the property demolition REIT grant that we're working on, under DA, I was supposed to try to get out a publication this week to advertise to uh demo two properties, one on Ambrose Street and one on Nona Street. I'll have to work on that next week. I didn't have time this week to schedule that, so that'll be next week. Cable Franchise Survey, uh, I developed a link for that to Survey Monkey, so that's been sent out to the um cable franchise, the cable committee. And they started dispersing that to the public. So we got over 200 responses in less than two days. I think we're getting ready to put it on our Facebook as well.
It's, it's on the Facebook.
It's on City's Facebook.
It's on the city website. It's two places on the city website as well.
Okay.
It's on the homepage of the city website. And it's also under the news, uh, news and announcements of the city website. So that link is there, ready to.
So people can put their.
Yeah. It's an easy survey to take.
It's a real easy one.
Yeah.
Simple. Gives them some information for the committee. And then just real quick, Mary, you may have, were you going to report on the Mon Power PSA about the power outage?
Yeah, we have it, we have it right here. You, you want to?
I can do it real quick. Uh, Mon Power gave us a notice that on May the 10th, from 6, from 5:00 AM to 6:00 AM, and that's May the 10th, there were several streets listed, listed in there that would be affected. Now, it is an early morning, so it may not affect some people, but for City Hall, for instance, has a computer service, so we're going to have to shut that down that night so it doesn't abruptly, I mean, we've got some backups, but we don't want to. And then we've got a general, we don't have generated, but we've got power supply, but we don't want that to go down abruptly. Uh, but there was lots of streets, First Street, Third Avenue, Arnold, Cambridge Heights, Central Avenue, Cleveland Avenue, College Avenue, Cooper Street, East Lincoln, East Main, East Victoria, Elias, Elizabeth, Evanbrough, Friendly Way. Hart Avenue, Latham, Lightburn, Madison, Market Square, Mead, Morton, North Florida, North Canola, North Spring, Newland, Nona, Riverbend, South Florida, South Canals, South Spring Street, Smithfield, Traders Alley, Victorian, West Main. And I think we're going to post that too as well on our.
Yeah, we, I, I was going to do it today, but I thought we both were loading. The public was stuck, we haven't been there.
I know that there are also automated phone calls going out because I got one um telling me just, you know, this afternoon that, hello, this is Mon Power and, you know, we have an important, at first I thought, oh gosh, that, you know, I pay my bill on auto draft now that it not go through, but um, but no, it's, it's for the interruption. So if you are in an interrupted area, you will, you should, and they have an accurate phone number for you, you should get a phone call. Is that all?
I think that's enough.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ambi.
Thanks, Abby.
I don't see JB Kimble here. Do you see JB Kimble here?
No, but uh, much younger and much better looking.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Oh, Captain.
How do you do?
So in your package you received, you can see for the month of March, we had 86 total calls for service. And you can break it down in the, the next page of how many we had per call. For the year, from January to the end of March, we've had 264 calls so far. And of course, it breaks it down even further. If there's any questions on the packets, I'll answer any of those for you. Jerry was asking me about one that says bring your jewelry removal. That was a gentleman who uh decided to stick a pair of handcuffs on one arm and did not have the lock to where he could unlock it, so we had to go take that off of him, so.
Well, I'll ask you the other question.
And then further in your package, you can see the mutual aid calls we went to each department.
How much you charge?
No, no charge for that. We don't charge anybody for that kind of service. We was kind of, we was kind of wondering what we was getting into and it was called out. And then um, going back to the packet, you can actually see the number of calls in each individual fireman has responded to for the month of March and for the year. Does anybody have any questions in that packet to your seat?
I believe so.
All right. And other stuff that we need, what we need to bring up is, uh, starting next month, June uh 17th to 22nd, State Fire Academy will be doing their Junior Firefighter Camp. It's offered to anybody the age of 14 to 17 that has any interest in the fire service. Uh, it costs $375 to go for those six days. But the Buchanan Fire Department and Upsher County Firefire Association has decided to pay per, each, one person, each individual, if anybody's interested in going to that. So if you know anybody in the community that's interested, they'll learn all aspects of the fire service. The first year they go is a little bit less advanced, but then the second year they go back, they learn more advanced techniques and stuff like that. It leaves, or trains them in leadership skills, know in the future. It's a really good program. Went down a couple of years and helped out with it and it's, it's a great time and it's, it goes to multiple states. There's kids throughout the United States that comes to this. And it's a great time. They will stay all week at the Jackson Mill, have all the mills provided for them. So again, if you know anybody, please contact us, we'll, we'll sponsor one to go there if they want to go to us. Other than that.
Also saw that the Country Roads uh Fire Expo that was held here in January, it's been uh scheduled again for January of '24.
Yes.
So that's good, it's coming back to Buchanan. I know that that was a good, good event that brought a lot of people from across the state and across the south uh here, Charlotte, Atlanta, there were, a lot of people were here.
There was, everyone that came, so they're planning on attending again next year, so I think it'll grow this coming, next year coming. Other than that, the training facility's still coming along. Shane, uh, John and Lynn have been working last week really hard on the simulated house that's inside the old waste garage building. So it's coming really well along. If you all get a chance, I suggest going to go take a look at it. And then there's a large pile of brush that started forming, where people are bringing in, where we're going to do the burn tower. We've been working the last three days getting it burned off during, it's been nice enough for us to let use equipment, so it's almost completely taken care of now.
He's a swell guy.
Yeah, he's a swell guy. Yeah. And then other than that, uh, called Heritage Firefoot, where our new mansion's been up in Ohio for quite some time. I spoke with uh Bernie Wolf on uh Wednesday. They will have that truck done Tuesday and we're planning on going up Wednesday to finally pick it up.
Good. So I was hoping it would be back home before Strawberry Festival.
Yeah, we was too, so. Yeah, we'll be coming back unless we find something else, so.
Uh, today we shared a post on Facebook. Today is uh International Firefighters Day, so uh thank you all for everything you do for Upsher County and beyond, so we appreciate it.
Does anybody have any questions?
Good report.
Age is 14 to 17.
And that's the State Fire Academy?
That's State Fire Academy down in Jackson's Mill. Yes. If anybody's interested, please contact us. We'll pay for one individual and like I said, the Upsher County Fire Association, Fire Association will do the same also. Well, thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care.
Up next, do you have a reporter or do you want to?
I can wait, Ed. I can talk now or I can talk later. Is there a National City Attorney today at any?
We'll look into that.
Sure there's not. Just checking.
All right, well, we will, we will just read through these uh correspondent information items very quickly and then we'll get down to uh, uh, down to strategic. Under Correspondent Information, we've got, as Ambi pointed out, the Notice of Public Hearing for the, for the Cable Television Franchise Renewal Agreement. Um, and that is uh with Optimum, of course, and that's at City Hall in Council Chambers on Monday, May 22nd at 6:00 PM. Um, we uh rescheduled last meeting, the uh city council meeting for the week of uh, of the Strawberry Festival. Instead of May 18th being Thursday, it will be Tuesday, May 16th at 7:00 PM as to not conflict with the uh Junior Royalty Parade on that Thursday evening. Um, also, I'm sure uh everyone has seen by now, but a decision was made, uh, we are not having a dedicated horse and carriage parade this year. Due to um just a lot of circumstances, it, it is really, horses, horse and carriage riding is a, it, it's an aging hobby. Uh, it is a very expensive hobby and it now costs more than ever uh to, to bring a horse from a long, a long distance to uh, to Buchanan or anywhere for that matter. So we, uh, we had interest and, and, and I know that the uh Extension Office worked very hard uh calling uh every single day, trying to attract people to come to the parade. But we only ended up with about 25 to 30 units uh interested this year. So what's going to happen is, is that those uh individuals are going to be encouraged to participate uh in our Junior Royalty Parade on Thursday evening. So there will be some horse, uh, horse riding going on in our uh Junior Royalty Parade, which will be on Thursday, the 18th. So no dedicated parade on Saturday, the 13th as previously uh scheduled. But opening ceremonies and uh the coronation will, will be held uh on that day, on the 13th uh anyway. We have a notification to residents and businesses along the parade route and some lineup uh staging areas. If you'll recall, the city of Buchanan has an ordinance that uh prohibits any parking on uh any parade route, and that does include lineup areas uh for the Strawberry Festival, all three parades, as well as uh High School Homecoming Parade, uh, the uh, the Wamsby uh parades, uh, the Christmas Parade and the Veterans Day Parade. So any parade that we have in, in the city of Buchanan, you cannot park along the parade route. Um, and, and unlike some of our other uh uh leniencies within our parking ordinance, we do not warn uh for that. It is a safety issue, so if you are parked on the parade route, your vehicle will be removed. So please keep that in mind. We have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board uh approved, and this was approved by the Consolidated Public Works Board, uh placement of signage at all city parks, uh including the Poundstone River Walk Trail, that the park will be closed from sunset to sunrise. We needed to have that specific language in there uh for, to allow our police department to properly patrol the area. So sunrise and sunset are dedicated times. You can easily Google those times uh throughout the year because they do, they fluctuate, they fluctuate every day. So uh parks, all parks within the city are, are technically closed uh from sunset to sunrise and that signage is being placed on the parks. The Parks and Recreation Board also recommended and Consolidated Public Works Board uh agreed that the closure of the Rotary Park located at 196 South Florida Street, that's at the corner of Wood Street. I did see that there were several uh folks seemingly upset uh about that decision uh from a, from a Facebook post on my Buchanan. But I would encourage folks to read the article as we did talk about a plan both for that uh, that area. Um, we, the city will not abandon it. We have opportunity to either uh plant a, another, another public orchard or to plant another community garden. Uh, that's been discussed as, and then as well as moving uh the park just a few blocks to where the uh, the city now, as soon as we pass two, two ordinances, or two reading ordinance, I should say, um, when we did the property swap with Westland, uh, we have an opportunity to redevelop the area right next to the, the boat launch uh at uh, at the River Trail, which is just, just literally two blocks away from where the Wood Street Park currently is. Uh, that park has not been used in several years, uh, and that, that, that information was collected by neighbors who have watched the area. So uh, we do believe that there's an opportunity to better purpose that, that land. So, but I would encourage folks to read the article. It does explain uh the plans in there and not just, not just the headline. So that's, that's, that, that's coming from the Parks and Recreation Board. From the Historic Landmarks Commission, um, we uh, this is something that, um, has been something I've really wanted for the, for a few years now and I, I want dedicated historic district signage from the Department of Highways coming into Buchanan from Route 33. Um, we have provided the State Department of Highways with uh examples of other cities that have historic district signage um along highways pointing to their downtown areas. And so I provided that to the State Department of Highways in Charleston, as well as mocked up what a sign could look like that mirrors that of Lewisburg and Charlestown that specifically says, it's a brown dedicated sign that says Buchanan Historic District, use this exit. Uh, so uh, the, the, the request is to place a signage, um, a sign um both east and west approaching Buchanan uh before the Main Street exit coming from the west and before the Route 20 exit coming from the east, as well as uh placement of directional signs at the foot of the exit ramps once you get off each exit taking you into downtown. That was discussed at Historic Landmarks Commission, um, and uh I think it would be really good for our city to have those. It's kind of like a community legitimizer. When you see a historic district signage coming into a town, it really, it, it shows the general public that you're approaching something that's pretty special. Which Buchanan actually does have two uh officially registered and designated historic districts. The Central Buchanan Historic District, which is residential, and the Downtown Commercial Historic District, which is main, the main street area and a few of the side streets. Okay, and then we also have the report of the cat and dog activity from March of 2023 from the Upsher County Commission. And then we have the Notice of Advertisement for Bids for the REIT Grant uh demolition project. Okay, that's correspondence and information. Uh, under Consent Agenda, we have the approval, the minutes from 4:20. We have the approval of the building and wiring permits and, and then we have the approval of the payment of our bills. If there are no additions or corrections to the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion that we approve. We have a motion by CJ, we have a second by Mr. Rigor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Okay, strategic issues for discussion and or vote. First up is the approval, uh, you would be approving my signature uh to execute. vote. First up, is the approval, you would be approving my signature to execute the renewal agreement between USI Insurance. This is for our PEIA Consulting with Mr. Pete Thaxton from Huntington. Our employees really enjoy having somebody to talk to that can answer their specific questions. Pete comes to Buckhannon a couple times a month and will sit down with employees, and will also come up on an as-needed basis if there is a, if there's a real serious question. Pete's also accessible by phone and by Zoom, but he's done a nice job with our, with our employees and helping them feel like they have their questions answered. So I don't, I've read through this. I don't think that there's anything different from the last couple of years. The price is the same. It's a quarterly payment of $5,000, which would be a, a, a sum of, of $20,000. So if you would be so kind as to allow me to execute that, I'd appreciate it.
Shout out.
Motion by Mr. McCauley, second by Mr. Sanders. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Okay, F2, we have a Letter of Request from West Virginia Wesleyan College for the Assist, Assistance of Demolition of 85 Wood Street. This is a blighted piece of property on Wood Street just to the, would be the south of Braxton Street. Would you, so we've, we've, we've had these kind of deals made before with the Upstate County Board of Education. We, we've had them done with the County Commission, and so Wesleyan would be a similar partner.
This will create a nice green space.
Yes.
Over there. I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Sanders, a second by Mr. Thomas. Is there discussion?
As long as the abatements and, and all of that is.
Yep.
Certified prior to our guys going in and doing the job.
That.
I've drafted a, I've drafted an agreement that's on the same model as our similar agreements with the Board of Education. It provides the college has to get the asbestos testing before we would handle the raising, and they're responsible for any asbestos abatement prior to that demolition.
Tom, that property's already been inspected and abated.
Okay, great.
There's a report that's been left at City Hall.
Okay, very good.
Good. All right, there's a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries.
I will abstain.
Okay. All right, please let the minutes reflect that council approves the motion with one abstention, that being David McCauley. F3, this we will defer to Mr. O'Neill to take us through a first reading of an Ordinance 463, and this would be the execution of the property exchange that we voted and passed on back in late February 1st to March timeframe with West Virginia Wesleyan College.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll read the ordinance by caption, and then proceed to discussion. The council has reported Ordinance Number 463 of the City of Buckhannon, an ordinance approving the city's conveyance to West Virginia Wesleyan College Incorporated, a West Virginia nonprofit corporation, of two particular tracts or parcels of real property in trade and exchange for 13 particular, actually, I think that should be 15. I'll fix that title on the, on the second reading.
Okay.
Particular tracts or parcels of real property, as well as an agreement for the city to vacate certain city streets, alleys, or portions thereof, all of said real estate situated in Corporation District of Upstate County, West Virginia. Members of council, this is pretty straightforward. I, just so you know, I've completed the, my due diligence on the, on the properties in question. There are no issues that should complicate or, or cause me difficulty for this, this transaction. The purpose of the ordinance tonight is to comply with state code. It says that all acquisitions or dispositions of real estate by a city council have to be undertaken by ordinance. This ordinance does not affect the transfer. That will be followed up after the, after the ordinance takes effect on June 15th, assuming that the second reading is, second reading is passed at the next meeting on the, on the 16th. Once we get past that 30th day, then we can proceed to a traditional closing, exchange of deeds, and so on. With respect to the alleys in question that are laid out in Article 4 of the ordinance, that would be, that will take a separate ordinance to affect that, and I would recommend that the council waits until after the, the closing, the affiliated properties take place, until we proceed with the, with vacating those alleys. So everything's laid out in Articles 2, 3, and 4 with respect to the properties that the city are conveying, which is the Factory Street, the old city streets garage at 17 Factory Street, 21 Factory Street, and then the 15 pieces of property that would be transferred from the college to the city, which include a number of all lots, the rail trail itself, as well as the, the restroom building that's on Camden Avenue by the baseball field. I'd be happy to take any questions.
As I recall, this, when we, when we did the initial agreement to agree to, to agree to do this, this ordinance, or that, that passed unanimously with the exception of your abstention due to your affiliation with the college. So I just wanted to remind council of that. This is the same, this, this is the same, this is just in ordinance form, but it is the same concept.
I have some questions. I'm not going to participate in the vote, but I do have some points of clarification for Tom. First off, Tom, one of the eight properties that was in the memo that I did last April, that Robbie has had since then, included the Mead Street Extension. Driving around, I went down and checked your addresses, and they're all spot on. 80 Camden, 77 Randolph, 78 Randolph, and 79 Wood Street, in fact, are those four lots that if you go to the end of Mead Street, as though you were going to run right into the property there at Camden Avenue, that takes you all the way to Wood Street. That, those four properties were to be in swap for the Braxton Street property that's about 100 feet down the pike. I don't see that. Is that something that's going to be added to this list of alleys, or?
I've, the ordinance is drafted based on the instruction that I received. The memo you described, I only saw for the first time today. I wasn't instructed to include Braxton Street in the ordinance. That's a matter for the council to discuss, if it wants to amend the ordinance.
I can clarify that. I, I did meet with President Moore, and we, we both agreed that it probably was best not to, for the city to abandon a, a public city street, and that they really were, that they, they were happy to, for us to keep that. It would, so that, that was struck, but those, those addresses remain the same should we ever want to continue at Mead Street to Wood. So Braxton will remain within the control of the city of Buckhannon.
So James was on board with that.
Yep.
Second question. The city wants to develop the, the River Trail from downtown to connect with the college River Trail, and ultimately, you know, everybody knows, middle school, high school, Sago, all that stuff that we have in our dreams to see the River Trail extended. We were to reserve a 10-foot in width right-of-way off of the old street garage properties for future development of the River Trail.
We can certainly do that as part of the closing, and we'll, if, we'll, we'll remember to do that. I don't think that's necessary to put in the ordinance, although it certainly can be amended to reflect that. I don't think it's.
I think when, when Shayla and I looked at the GIS mapping, the city's property did not, according to GIS, did not go all the way to the river.
I think it just goes to the railroad right-of-way.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we'd have to have 10 feet on the inside of the railroad. For the River Trail extension, yeah. And then the last point, and then I'll shut up, because I'm not even voting on this thing, is the reversionary language relative to the dog park lots. Can we be sure that that's in the deed?
Yes.
That if at such time, it's not used for recreational purposes, the college could declare a reversion of the dog.
Well, that, I don't think that is the, are, I'm not certain of this. Are any of these properties in Article 3, the dog park property?
Yes.
Which one? Okay, so when I looked at the map, it didn't look like that.
It is. We had the parcel numbers. I wasn't sure if they are.
Okay, we'll, we'll take care of that.
The official, the final map is on that table in there. I meant, sorry, Ambie, I meant to bring it in here, but it has all the properties in color-coded fashion.
I, I think it's tax map eight, parcels 191, 92, 93, 94, 95. I think those are the dog park properties.
Very first ones on it there.
That would make sense.
Some are shown as Randolph, some are shown as Wood.
It's the square down by the, the boat launch.
Oh, it's that one.
Well, it's the, it's the larger square.
Well, it's the left.
It's to the le, it's to the left of Walk Trail Link.
Yeah, certainly. So if the, so we'll keep that reversionary language that exists in the existing agreement. That'll carry over.
It was just relative to the dog park. That's all I have.
Okay, anything else? I don't know that we.
Jerry, you have something?
Just, just one. I'll read through this again. Whenever we did the, the swap that, matter of fact, was discussed earlier in the meeting with the hospital, we had utilities in some of those rights-of-ways. Is there language, or should there be language in this, Sam, is that to, if Wesleyan were to develop over those utility rights-of-ways, it would be on them to?
On the, on the.
Relocation?
In the alleys?
Yes.
Well, that would be part of, when we do the, the next ordinance to vacate the alleys, that would be the appropriate place to put that language. That is.
And those, just, those alleys, you can find them if you tried, if you, from a, from a visual, physical standpoint. For example, the alley, the alley that is between Wood and, and Randolph, and the alley that's between Camden and Randolph, those are already parking lots that the college has developed. So those would be the, the ones behind the former Camden dorms.
But we'll put that language in just to, just to have, just to be protected. You have no problem.
So on, on the, on the map, you can see two alleys, but there are no alleys.
Yeah.
If we pass this this evening, and it is your, it is your counsel that we can't pass this this evening without having any of these changes made, you'll correct the, the heading of the ordinance, and you'll add any others, or?
Yeah, the, if you want to make a motion, you can, you can move tonight to amend the title, to change the word 13 to 15. That's one way to, to do it. But that's, that's not wrong.
It's, you can, you can.
I think, I think what I'm getting to is, if we were to pass this on its first reading, could we very, in the very near future, within the next day or so, have a memo that outlines everything that was discussed here that we will see in the final property deal?
In, you mean in, in the deeds?
Yeah.
Certainly.
Yeah, yeah, because I think we've bounced around a lot of conversation here, but as, as we voted on the second reading, I'd like all of us to be sure of the deal that will then be constructed with the closing.
So that would include the, the, the 10 feet that we would, that we would reserve on, on the, at the end of Factory Street along the river? It would include the change in the heading from 13 to 15?
Well, that you should do by motion.
We'll do that as a separate motion, right?
Right.
Okay, and what else would it, should that include? The?
The utility.
Utility right-of-ways?
The utility restrictions and the River Dog Park.
Right, right. Is that it? Okay.
And Braxton.
I don't think Braxton's in there. Braxton was omitted before, before the draft of
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, first of all, that we amend the heading of this ordinance, replacing the word 13, where it says exchange for 13 particle tracks to 15. So it's exchange for 15 particle tracks.
Is there a second to that effect? Second by CJ. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Let the minutes reflect that the council agrees to, to that with the exception of Mr. McCauley, who abstains.
I used to have a talk show.
Okay. Following that, is there, with, with that change that Mr. Sanders has suggested, is there a motion to pass on first reading? And a motion by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rigger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries, and let the minutes also reflect the same, that the council agrees to that, to that motion with the exception of Mr. McCauley, who has abstained.
Okay, man, from my report that I didn't make earlier, I just wanted to update the council on one other matter that's currently pending, this appeal, if we're ready to, if we're moved on.
Sure.
The, the appeal of the zoning board's decision on the College Avenue property, just wanted to let the council know that our answer was filed, included a motion to dismiss because there's some, in my opinion, fatal errors with the, with the filing that, that the petitioner made. But it's in the court's hands now. The court may rule based on the pleadings. You may, Judge, you may schedule a hearing, but we'll, the ball is in their court, is in the court's court.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right, there are no more issues for, for strategic vote. So we are down to council member comments and announcements. Mrs. Bucklew is not here. She is performing in the Red Velvet Cake Wars performance at the Colonial Arts Center. If you have an opportunity tomorrow, Saturday, or Sunday to go and see that, I know that she would appreciate that, as would all the council members of Buckhannon Community Theater. So she is, she is excused this evening, so we will begin with Mr. McCauley.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. I want to thank all of the well wishers who've reached out in the past week. As many of you know, I incurred a moderate stroke last Thursday, and I'm still, I've got the squishy balls. I'm trying to get the grip back in the left hand, and my left leg is a little compromised, but we're in physical rehab and working on that, and it hasn't affected my mind any, so you guys are stuck with me.
We'll be the judge of that.
That's exactly right. And could we also consider a brief executive session to discuss personnel and property matters?
Uh, sure.
Thanks. That's all I have.
All right. Jack?
Dave, we're glad you're doing well.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And we've certainly been in our prayers. I don't have anything other than that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rigger. Mr. Thomas?
Just wish David to continue speedy recovery, and that's it.
CJ?
Well, I'm all for David getting better and all the rest of us, and if you want to follow in my footsteps, I'll be going to True North Health Clinic this Saturday morning. I'll be there for 30 days, and I'll be drinking distilled water for 20 days in a row. So we'll see. Passing and then a careful refeeding protocol, so I'll come back a little less on me, I guess. I don't know. It's, it's an unknown, but when the mainstream medical doesn't get the job done, you've got to take things into your own hands. So that's what I'm doing.
Have a great 30 days.
Oh, yeah. Exciting.
You'll be calling it, Cal.
As long as there's no food, I, then I.
No, no ice cream.
Mr. Sanders?
Well, I just want to, again, as the others have mentioned, wish Councilman McCauley speedy recovery. Godspeed to CJ Rollins on his next adventure. I admire your fortitude. You've done a marvelous job in your recovery to this point, and we just hope that that continues as well. So I want to shout out to the class of 23 at Western Union Wesleyan College as they head into graduation weekend. Western Strawberry Festival's right around the corner. Opening ceremonies, the opening day, that is, will include the coronation, and I have been humbled once again to be asked to emcee that. Mary's candidate will be there to present the keys to the city. So it'll be, it's just one of the most regal, most beautiful ceremonies ever produced through the Western Strawberry Festivals. So I invite you to come out, check the schedule, just follow up on everything that Western Strawberry Festival has to offer this year. It's going to be a great, great festival. Also want to announce the tickets for the Wamsby Events, one on sale Monday. We had a very robust opening day, a good follow-up day yesterday, and did well today with our sales. Starting next week, you'll be able to not only continue to purchase those tickets online, very easy to do, but you'll be able to also visit a couple of locations in town. We'll have actual printed tickets available. The Chamber of Commerce will offer those for sale, and also we'll have them, I believe, available here at City Hall. So it's coming. Lee Greenwood is confirmed for the opening ceremonies. Had a great conversation with him the other day for his performance. He'll be singing some of his more popular patriotic songs, of course, ending up with God Bless USA. Sunday night, we close with the United States Marine Drum and Bugle Corps, 68. Sunday night, we close with the United States Marine Drum and Bugle Corps, 68-member military drum and bugle corps out of Washington DC, which is absolutely phenomenal. Hair on your arms will stand up when you see these fine musicians and service members perform. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, and thank you for plugging the Strawberry Festival. You do a very nice job in helping that be such an elegant event, the coronation, so, and thank you for all your work with Wamsby. I, I know it's been quite a heavy lift, and, you know, contrary to popular belief, even, even he can't wait until we don't have to say that, that, that acronym anymore. So I echo colleagues on council, certainly wish David continued recovery and strength from, from your, from your stroke, and certainly we, we wish and pray for healing on, for CJ in his 30-day journey in California. You know, I think we, when you're young, and you hear about it all the time, if you don't have your health, you don't have anything, and that, you don't take that seriously when you're, you know, a kid and teens and twenties, and then, and then, you know, and then when adulthood hits, you, you realize that that is a very true statement. So certainly wish all colleagues on council a good health, you know, not, all, just about every member on this council has at one point or another had some scary times health-wise. So, you know, we, we, we want to make sure that everyone stays, stays healthy and is able to provide good service to the community. So we have some, we'll be able to announce very soon, we have an exciting new business getting ready to open up on Main Street. So the Development Authority's been working on that, and the city's been working on that. So Nexus Stone Tower Brews, it's going to be a, it's a, it's a popular retail store that has been in the, a little bit outside of our region for, for many years, but they're making the voyage to open up a store here in Buchanan, and they're no longer in their location in Flatwoods. So good, good news coming, and we'll be happy to be able to announce that very, very soon. Again, go see the play, and I hope everyone takes in as many events as the Strawberry Festival as possible. It is, it's our most glorious time of year. Some, you know, with anything, you'll have some folks that say, get me the heck out of town, but I have always loved it, and I'm happy to be on the board. It's been a great group to work with. So with that, before the train comes, I'll adjourn motion at 8:39. Do we adjourn?
I will move.
All right, we're adjourned. Have a good weekend.